Good morning, we are about to start, may we please request the honorable guests and resource persons to be seated. Here at the table po, thank you. Good morning, the regular meeting on the committee of the Committee on Health is now called to order. May we all stand for the invocation.
In vocation, Almighty Father, Creator of Heaven and Earth, we honor your name. Today, as we perform our duties as public servants, we humbly ask you, dear Lord, to guard our hearts and mind and to put the interests of all welfare for fellow men above all else. Make us more sensitive to the needs of those who have lessened life and give us a listening ear to those attending today's deliberation as we search for the best course of action to face our pressing issues today. We entrust the remaining hours of the day into your hands and let your will be done. All these we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. The next is the, uh, the roll call and the approval of the minutes of the committee meeting, uh, Honorable Plato.
I move to dispense with the roll call.
Second, there's a duly seconded motion to dispense with the calling of the roll. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Uh, any move to do dispense with the reading?
Mr. Chair, I move to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting and thereafter approve the same.
There's a duly seconded motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting and the adoption of the same. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. At this point, we'd like to acknowledge the, uh, members of the committee who are here present. This morning, um, our vice chairperson, uh, Honorable Keith Maica Attorney Maik Tan, Honorable Salvador Plato of the Sixth District of Bulacan, and Honorable Ricardo Cruz of the First District, Taguig Pateros, and our vice chair, uh, Senior Vice Chair of the Committee on Health, Honorable, um, Tony, um, Gómez. Thank you. Uh, Comsec, you please acknowledge the, the, our resource persons this morning.
Good morning Chair, Honorable Members of the Committee. In attendance for today's meeting as resource persons are, from the Department of Health, Mr. Michael Bolatow, and Miss Conny Liberan. From the, uh, the President of the Pharmaceutical and Healthcare Association of the Philippines, Dr. Chodoro B. Padilla, the Executive Director. Are you around sir? Good morning.
Good morning.
From the, uh, Armed Forces of the Philippines, Brigadier General Ulysses Márquez, morning sir, and Colonel Dino Flores, Colonel Jose Redemble, Reduble, and the rest of the officers, good morning sirs. And from the, uh, Philippine, Philippine Health Insurance Corporation or Field Health, Dr. Santiago Abarisha.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
That would be all for now, your honor.
Thank you, Comsec. Good morning once again, distinguished members of the committee and esteemed, esteemed guests. In the agenda of today's meeting are two bills of national importance. Um, these are both strengthening, the strengthening of the Bureau of Quarantine and the strengthening of the country's healthcare manufacturing industries. We're also happy to finally complete all technical discussions and consultation of the substitute bill of the two very crucial and priority undertakings of the committee which we are both approving later to commence their pre-plenary journey. Namely, the Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products Prevention Act and the Health Maintenance Organization Act. Reeling from our painful COVID experience, there is now a compelling need to develop our own health manufacturing capacity. As proposed, the strengthening of domestic healthcare manufacturing industries provides for a much enhanced and proactive framework for national or localized public health emergency preparedness and response mechanism to counteract the threats of emerging or re-emerging infectious disease, pandemics and other public health challenges. Specifically, the bill is passed granting healthcare manufacturing industries tax benefits, exemptions and incentives, and mandating that in times of pandemic or public health emergencies they be given preference by the government in the procurement of critical products and services or in the man, or in the manufacture, production and distribution of critical products such as medicines, vaccines, ventilators and other necessary medical supplies, equipment, including their stockpiling and such other contingency plans to deal with any imminent or potential or future public health events and emergencies. As laid before us for consideration, the bill seeks to augment local international health surveillance in the prevention of the spread of global diseases and public health threats. The amendment proposed to enhance the internal capacity of the Bureau of Quarantine to detect and examine at the ports of entry and exit in the Philippines of any incoming and outgoing vessels and aircraft, conduct the necessary surveillance over their per, or over their sanitary conditions as well as over their cargoes, passengers, crews and all personal effects, and issue quarantine certificates, bills of health or other equivalent documents. The BOQ shall have authority over incoming vessel and outgoing vessels, both domestic and foreign, including those of the Army and Navy, their warfades and anchorage, and over aircraft and airports insofar as it is necessary to prevent the introduction and spread of diseases, whether of local or international concern into the country. Immediately after the discussion of these two measures, we shall call on the sponsoring TW Chairs of the Unnumbered Substitute Bills on the Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products Prevention Act and the Health Maintenance Organizations Act. So, without further ado, let's proceed now with the, uh, the first, uh, agenda. The, uh, deliberation on the bills strengthening the healthcare manufacturing industries. Um, on House Bill Number 1100, an act strengthening domestic healthcare manufacturing industries providing for the protection against pandemic and for other purposes. Honorable Attorney Keith Maica Attorney, Attorney Maik, Maik Tan is now recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good morning po sa ating lahat, uh, thank you for the opportunity to sponsor House Bill Number 1100, the proposed Healthcare Manufacturing and Pandemic Protection Act. In addition to what had already been stated in the explanatory note of the measure, I wish to highlight what had been written from the commercial viewpoint about the country's healthcare manufacturing industry. Let me read the pertinent portions of the Philippines Country Commercial Guide from the US official website of the International Trade Administration. It says, and I quote, "The Philippine medical device industry is highly dependent on imports. Currently imported medical devices account for ninety-nine point two percent, with the United States accounting for twelve percent of the market share. Other top suppliers include China, Singapore, Japan and Germany. Major medical device companies present in the country are Baxter, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Medtronic, GE Healthcare and Varian. Chinese medical devices also hold a significant share as their competitive prices and products are readily available. Local production is limited to hospital furniture and medical disposables. Moreover, local production also supports prototypes and spare parts. US medical device manufacturers may find export opportunities for low-volume, high-value equipment to strengthen the current efforts of hospitals on specialized services. Innovative medical devices like advanced point-of-care devices, diagnostic devices and cancer treatment devices are also in demand," unquote. Mr. Chair, your honors, this write-up reveals what many of us know all along, the country's heavy reliance on imported medical devices. And it couldn't get any worse, especially in the light of the report by the Global Preparedness Monitoring Board, an independent monitoring and advocacy body that aims to assess the world's ability to protect itself from health emergencies, and I identify critical gaps to preparedness across multiple perspectives that warrants about the incapacities of most countries, including the Philippines, to handle a large influx of patients in case of another respiratory pathogen capable of easy trans visibility and high mortality occurs. As pointed out in the JEE Mission Report, the Philippines, due to its location, is one of the most natural disaster-prone countries in the world and in the past decade, the country has faced challenges in making solid progress in infectious disease control. Given this situation, the country's preparedness in times of public health emergencies is significantly necessary such as during pandemics and natural disasters. One case in point that caught the country and of course the rest of the world flat-footed is the COVID-19 pandemic which affected the global and local production and distribution of pharmaceuticals and medical devices as well as the supply of raw materials, active pharmaceutical ingredients, excipients, packaging materials as well as the finished medical products needed to combat COVID-19 and other diseases of public health. This is after India and China, the two of the biggest countries suppliers of active ingredients and finished generic products were both severely affected by the pandemic. To make things worse, countries like France, Germany, Turkey, Russia and India had imposed limits on the export of medicines and medical supplies and equipment such as face masks, shields and ventilators to mitigate critical shortages in their countries. For a certain period, the European Union also imposed a black-wide export ban on some medical protective equipment in order to keep adequate supplies within the region in the face of scarcity in supply and amid the increasing in demand during the height of the pandemic. The Philippines faces a great challenge in, challenge in sourcing healthcare equipment that is both reliable and affordable. Hence, this bill seeks to strengthen our domestic healthcare manufacturing industries by granting them tax benefits and mandating that they be given preference by the government in the procurement of critical products and services in times of pandemics or public health emergencies. I therefore ask the committee for the favorable consideration of this measure. Good morning, Paulit.
Thank you, Honorable Tan. Next is House Bill Number 3173, an act providing for the development of the healthcare and manufacturing industries to strengthen the country's protection against pandemics and providing funds therefore by, um, Honorable Ralph Rekto, now Secretary of Finance. So, in his behalf, we'd like to recognize, um, Honorable Ricardo Cruz Jr. to sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the absence of the author, Congressman Rekto, now Secretary of Finance, this humble representation will surely sponsor House Bill Number 3173 and move that the explanatory note be entitled, uh, the sponsorship, sponsorship speech, uh, I so move.
Thank you very much, Honorable Cruz. Next is House Bill Number 9739, an act providing for the protection against pandemic and the development of the healthcare and manufacturing industries and providing funds therefore by Representative Rufus B. Rodríguez. In his absence, we'd like to recognize Honorable Salvador Plato to sponsor in his behalf.
Take care. In the absence of Congressman Rufus Rodríguez, uh, author of House Bill 9739, I move that his, uh, explanatory note be adopted as his promotional speech. So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Plato. Before we proceed, we'd like to recognize the presence of Honorable Raúl Angelo Gil Bongalon of Ako Bicol Partilis, thank you. May we now, um, recognize, uh, Director Joyce Serunay of the Food and Drug Administration.
Uh, good morning, Honorable Congressman, and, uh, um, for the Food and Drug Administration, uh, we manifest to support the bills, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Ma'am Serunay. From the Department of Health, we now recognize, uh, Mr. Michael Bolatow. Oh, sorry, um, Ms. Conny Liberan. You're now recognized.
Good morning, Honorable Congressman. Uh, the DOAT supports the intention of the bills. This will ensure the sustainability and availability of supply of goods within the emergency and country, which are crucial during pandemic at the prices that are reasonable and affordable. With regards to preference to the local health manufacturer in times of public health emergencies and pandemics, we highly recommend the inclusion of provision in the bill that the local manufacturer should prioritize the government's requirement. Moreover, we also recommend that DTI simplifies the requirement of establishing a manufacturing business so as to encourage more manufacturers to invest and open more job opportunities in the countries. The DOAT should submit its official position paper once signed by the Secretary of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Liberan. Uh, from the, uh, from the Department of Trade and Industry, Attorney Frances Anne Marie Gumapak.
Thank you, your honor, a pleasant day to everyone. On behalf of Director Neil P. Katahai of the Bureau of Philippine Standards of the Department of Trade and Industry, we are in full support of the House bills and we respectfully submit the following comments. First, we propose that we properly define and differentiate a standard from a technical regulation so as to use the appropriate term in the provisions where it may be applicable. The World Trade Organization Technical Factors to Trade, or WTOTBT, has a definition which provides for what is a standard and what is a technical regulation. Also, we herein emphasize that BPS can create standards for the benefit of the implementing agencies as reference. And however, we would like to make sure that we do not encroach upon other agencies mandate such as that of the Food and Drug Administration, especially in view of the subject medical, uh, medical-related products in which are covered in the House bills that, House bills at hand. Nevertheless, res assured that we give high regard to the appropriate actions and decisions to be made by the Congress and we will be in full support of and in compliance to the same. We will also submit a comprehensive proposition paper with utmost priority, thank you sir.
Thank you, Attorney Gumapak, uh, from the Bureau of Internal Revenue, uh, Attorney Edgar Alan Reyes.
Uh, good, um, good morning, um, morning, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, the BAR recognizes the importance of the said bill, um. Um, however, um, we, we recommend that for, that for the exemption from custom duties, um, the clause that has been adopted in the Bayanihan to Hilas Wan Act be also adopted, that there shall be a clearance from the, uh, there shall be a, for the purpose of qualifying of the said exemptions for import duties, the DTI shall certify the equipment, spare parts and other critical goods as being not locally available or insufficient quality and preference. And likewise, uh, for, for tech, for equipments or technologies for waste management, um, it shall be approved by the Department of Environment and National Resources as well as for health facilities, uh, was supposed to be approved by the Department of Health. Um, and second, um, similar to what, what was done with the Bayanihan to Hilas Wan Act, the exemption from VAT sales, um, should be limited only to the sale of inputs or raw materials and equipments necessary to manufacture critical goods and services. And that same, um, that same thought shall be likewise carried as amendment for the treatment of export enterprises that shall be limited only to inputs, raw materials and equipments necessary to manufacture critical goods and services. That will be all, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Reyes, from the, uh, Board of Investments, Director Ronaldo Lignes.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, um, the various bills, um, provided prioritized pandemic protection act to deal with current and future, uh, pandemics. Um, this applies to domestic manufacturers or producer of critical products and emergencies and only upon compliance with accreditation requirement and standards, uh, specific to the proposal, uh, with the various bills. Um, in view of the BOI supports the pandemic protection act as a crucial measure, uh, for enhancing the country's preparedness and resilience during health crisis emergencies. Um, this act aligns with the BOI's mandate to promote investments and economic growth. Also, this emphasizes the importance of strategic stockpiling and domestic production capacity for critical health products. Overall, this act contributes to the economic recovery and stability of the Philippines. We will submit our position once it is, um, uh, signed by our principal, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Lignes. From the Philippine Medical Association, Dr. Podencio Santa Lucia Junior.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and to the rest of the attendees for this morning session. The position of the Philippine Medical Association fully supports the, uh, these bills. these bills and this would improve also the physician's way of attending to patients once these PPEs and other supplies are readily available to us in the local market. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Santa Lucia. From the Pharmaceutical and Healthcare Association of the Philippines, or PHAP, the Executive Director, Mr. Theodore Padilla.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Congressman Siriaco Gato Jr., esteemed authors of House Bills Number 1103173 and 9379, the Honorable Keith Maikatan, former representative and now Finance Secretary, the Honorable Ralph Rekto, and the Honorable Rufus Rodriguez, respectively. Respected members of the House Committee on Health, friends and colleagues from the pharmaceutical and health sector, a warm and pleasant morning to each of you. The Pharmaceutical and Healthcare Association of the Philippines, or PHAP, would like to express our gratitude to the honorable legislators for your commitment to strengthening the country's healthcare infrastructure and manufacturing capabilities through the proposed legislation. Today's hearing tackles an important measure that will bolster our national resilience against future pandemics. Reflecting on the challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic, we acknowledge the critical importance of ensuring a robust supply of essential medicines and vaccines to safeguard public health. The global response to the pandemic highlighted the collective effort of nations and industries worldwide with manufacturing supply chains designated with the utmost efficiency to address the crisis expediently. While the bill emphasizes the development of local manufacturing industries, we believe it is essential to institute mechanisms to also incentivize and facilitate access to critical products that may not have been manufactured in the country. We note that throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, international collaboration played a pivotal role in accelerating the development, production, and distribution of vaccines and therapeutics. Thus, we advocate for a more inclusive approach within the bill that acknowledges the role of both local and international manufacturers in ensuring access to life-saving treatments and vaccines. We pose no objection to the bill, but we do suggest some key points for consideration. An environment conducive to innovation, spurring research and development in the pharmaceutical and healthcare sector will strengthen our readiness to face public health emergencies by keeping our research pipelines running. Supply chain resilience, enhancing supply chain resilience by diversifying sourcing options and establishing contingency plans to mitigate risks associated with disruptions in global supply chains. Regulatory flexibility, adopting regulatory frameworks that balance expedited approval processes for emergency medicines and vaccines with stringent quality and safety standards, fostering innovation while prioritizing patient safety. And lastly, global collaboration and partnerships, promoting collaboration and partnerships with international pharmaceutical companies and research institutions to leverage their expertise and resources in addressing public health challenges. By embracing a collaborative and inclusive approach, we can collectively strengthen the Philippines' capacity to respond to pandemics and ensure equitable access to essential healthcare for all Filipinos. We again thank our good legislators for inviting us. We and our members look forward to closely working and collaborating with the rest of the committee members, relevant government agencies, and other stakeholders to refine this proposed measure. We also express our interest in being part of any technical working group that will be formed in the future. Marami salamat po. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. May I just remind our resource persons to please submit your written position paper to the committee as soon as possible? Any comments from the members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Plato?
Morning po, other colleagues and our resource persons. May clarification lang, Mr. Chair? If I may, I support these three bills. Actually, dapat lang talaga proactive tayo kasi walang makakasabi kung magkakaroon ng isang pandemic ulit. Isa lang po gusto kong iclarify. If you have your Department of Finance, or DBM, or the BAR, tama po ba ang intindiko na ang incentives provided by these bills? Tulad ng exemption from VAT, customs duties, et cetera, ay pwede lamang maclaim ng mga manufacturing company in relation and only specific to the critical product that they will produce? Balekong gumagawa rin sila ng products na hindi classified as critical, hindi pwedeng iclaim ang mga incentives in relation to those. Please clarify, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Plato. The BAR. Attorney Reyes.
Sir, I would like to first to clarify. The question is if it's only limited to the the exemption will be limited only to critical products? Yes, I think that's the same premise with what the Congress has done with Bayanihan to Recover to Hillas One Act, that it shall be only limited to critical products and services because precisely the premise for this act is the same with Bayanihan to Recover was an act to ensure that there be sufficient supply of goods, critical goods, that is, to ensure that the effects of a COVID-19 or a respiratory disease be sufficiently cured or controlled. Thank you.
Honorable Plato?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if there are no other comments or additional inputs from any of our resource persons and our fellow congressmen, may I make a motion? I move that the three bills pertaining to the strengthening of healthcare manufacturing industries be approved, Mr. Chair?
Second, there's a motion by Honorable Gólez, duly seconded by Honorable Cruz, that House Bill Number 1100 3173 and 9739 be consolidated and harmonized to form a substitute bill a subject to style and amendment. Hearing objection, House Bills Number 1100, 3173, and 9739 are approved. We now proceed with the bills amending the Quarantine Act of 2004. We now recognize Honorable Raúl Angelo Gil Bongalon for House Bill Number 9114, an act strengthening and rationalizing the regulatory capacity of the Bureau of Quarantine, renaming it to Philippine Quarantine Authority, amending certain sections of Republic Act Number 9271, and appropriating funds therefore. Honorable Bongalon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everyone, my colleagues. May I be allowed to read the explanatory note of House Bill Number 9114? Mr. Chairman, this bureau is considered as one of the oldest government bureau and this is close to my heart because my father is a former employee of this bureau. Mr. Chair, as mentioned in my explanatory note, the state is mandated to promote the health and well-being of every Filipino as enshrined in Article II, Section 15 of the Philippine Constitution, which provide that Section 15, the state shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. It has been observed that there is a three to five-year trend in the occurrence of public health emergency, of international concern, and pandemic over a rapidly increasing connectivity among people, trade, and modern technology, which policies and regulations must adopt. In its effort to protect the public from threat of health emergency and pandemic, there is a need to strengthen the regulatory power and coverage of the Bureau of Quarantine with due consideration of the rapidly expanding trade and travel in the country. Such regulatory framework must be aligned with international health regulation of the World Health Organization in integrated vector management and for easy prevention, containment, and mitigation considering from SARS to COVID-19, all outbreaks are of zoonotic origin. Moreover, all hazard approach in detection and prevention of spread of diseases and public health risk must also be harmonized with international health regulation of the World Health Organization. On a local scale, a standardized protocol on quarantine, isolation, quarantine lockdown nationwide may be included in the regulatory mandate of the bureau in order to manage resources and not overwhelm hospital by not using hospital facility and completely containing exposed individual prior to manifestation of signs and symptoms. In the same light, there is a need to harmonize with other existing new laws such as RA 10611, the new food safety law, and nationalize the implementation of quarantine laws as well particularly during the pandemic. In view of the foregoing and in order to address future health concerns, the passage of this bill is early sought. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bongalon. Next, here are House Bills 5665 and House Bills, a House Bill Number 8908 by Honorable Michael Romero. But since he's not around, may we now recognize Honorable Attorney Mike Tan to sponsor in his behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of the author, the Honorable Michael Romero, the One Pacman Party List, I would like to move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 5665 and House Bill Number 8908 be adopted as his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Attorney Mike, Honorable Attorney Mike Tan. We now recognize from the Bureau of Quarantine, Dr. Edgar Maala.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I would like, if you would allow me, to read the position paper. The Bureau of Quarantine loads the initiative of the Honorable Congressman to further improve the regulatory capacity of the bureau. With our previous experience during the height of the coronavirus disease, COVID-19 pandemic, it is not hard to comprehend that our prevailing laws, while well-mentioned, intentioned, are inadequate to ensure the protection of our people against the introduction and spread of infectious diseases, emerging diseases, and public health emergencies. The COVID-19 pandemic has shown that what's at stake upending the lives of families in our country while millions of lives have been lost globally, it's been a stark reminder of the need to strengthen our quarantine laws to facilitate a resilient health system. A proposed thereto, the Bureau firmly submits that in our present situation, we are likely to be no further along when the next health emergencies or pandemics ensue. Thus, to truly prepare for the next public health emergencies and pandemics, Bureau of Quarantine humbly concedes that more must be done to reduce the likelihood and impact of future health emergencies and pandemics. With this goal in mind, it is respectfully submitted that these proposed amendments are primordial in achieving a holistic and genuine national pandemic preparedness capacity of our country. The Bureau notes that the proposed conversion of the Bureau of Quarantine into the Philippine Quarantine Authority will provide a more appropriate, effective, and agile framework for the implementation of public health measures in critical times. The reinstitution of military rank of commissioned officers will bestow additional specialized training to our quarantine officers. This specialized training will further enhance our quarantine officers to meet the qualifications required to conduct inspection, surveillance, apprehension, and detention of any vessels, aircrafts, individuals, and goods considered as imminent public health threat. The proposed the proposal to impose higher penalties for violation of quarantine laws is necessary to promote public health, safety, and welfare. A higher level of fine is paramount in order to deter further commission of those punishable acts, which have increased tremendously during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. It is worthy to emphasize that protection of our people against the introduction and spread of infectious diseases, emerging diseases, and public health emergencies require a prompt and effective response at all levels, be it local, regional, national, or global. To support timely and effective action, our country must be prepared well in advance, including legally, to ensure that systems for preventing, managing, and responding to the infectious diseases, emerging diseases, and public health emergencies are in place and well-functioning. In view of the foregoing, the Bureau fully supports the effective changes introduced by the proposed bills. The Bureau emphasizes that it conducted consultations with various government agencies and stakeholders before expressing support to the provisions of the foregoing bills. Thank you very much. Salamat po.
Thank you very much, Dr. Maala. Next is from the Professional Regulations Commission, Dr. Efren Laksamana.
Good morning, Congressman. The and everyone here present. The PRC through the Board of Medicine supports the passage of these bills and shall address the regulatory requirements relative to professional medical care for the benefit of everyone that will be affected by any public emergencies and or any emergent health concerns. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Laksamana. From the Department of Transportation, Attorney Germa Dumayad.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. The Department of Transportation fully supports the these measures to amend the Quarantine Act of 2004 as this aims to strengthen the authority of the Bureau to enforce the functions it is empowered to implement. We observe that under Section 5C, D, F, and G of House Bill Numbers 8909, 89098 and 9114, there is an enumeration of the Bureau's authority or jurisdiction. However, we submit that for Section 5C, D, F, and G of both House bills, the jurisdiction or authority of the Bureau should be clarified. So we submit that as it merely enumerates that it has jurisdiction over certain certain areas or particular, yes, particular areas, this jurisdiction or authority should be insofar as necessary for the proper enforcement of the powers granted by legislation. We have we have suggested this one considering that under the Department of Transportation, the attached agencies or our sectoral offices also exercises certain regulatory functions over this, like jurisdictions over vessels or the over the aspect of air and aviation. So we submit those clarifications or further recommendation. Also, we we gather that Section 6B of House Bill Numbers 8909 and 9114 grant the authority or the Bureau to conduct surveillance, apprehension, and detention of any individuals and goods considered as imminent public health threat. However, to avoid ambiguous construction and to aid in the proper enforcement of the same, we submit that there should be clear guideline we submit that there should be clear guidelines on what may be considered as in contemplation of imminent public health threat. So this may be included under the implementing rules and regulations. We also have for certain recommendations for rewardings or restatement of certain provisions of the, of House Bill Number, Numbers 8909 and 9114. However, we would like to submit our position paper on this particular item so that we can discuss or provide our suggested revisions. And another item or another concern is under Section 7E in relation to Section 7D of the House Bills, both House Bills that I mentioned earlier. So maybe we suggest that the Director General or at least the Deputy Director Generals for Field Regulatory Operations, excuse me, should not only be a Director of Medicine but a scientist or a professional who studied or has knowledge about epidemiology. This will ensure that the office possesses adequate knowledge and skills to perform the required functions. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we note the authority given to the Bureau to detain and hold passengers, vessels, aircrafts, and cargoes found violating quarantine laws of the Philippines. So this provision grants the Bureau a police power which is concurrently exercised by a certain or some of the attached agencies of the OTR such as the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines in the aspect of air innovation and the Philippine Coast Guard in the maritime sector, although on grounds other than the violation of the quarantine laws of the Philippines. So this provision, the express provision properly arms, we allow this provision because it properly arms the Bureau to effectively carry out its functions. And maybe, or we also recommended this functions, we recommended this function to be coordinated with the transportation regulatory bodies such as the CAAP and the PCG, and they may assist in the proper implementation of these powers. So we do have some suggested rewardings or provisions, but we will submit our position paper as regards this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Dumayad. From the Armed Forces of the Philippines, Brigadier General Ulysses Marquez.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Sir, the Armed Forces of the Philippines fully supports the bills as it will strengthen the role of the current Bureau of Quarantine in ensuring the national health security and safety of the country. However, sir, we have comments as far as the reinstitution of military rank of commissioned officers of the PQA. There should be a distinction between the ranks of in the military as against to the PQA, sir, to avoid the confusion. And another thing, sir, is the clarification on what department or agency should the PQA belong. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, General Marquez. Yes, Honorable.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I welcome the comments and suggestions of the various government agencies. And in order to harmonize this with our existing laws and to avoid confusion, especially from the Brigadier General Marquez, and also to avoid overlapping and encroachment of other powers and functions, I fully welcome the suggestions and comments. And most likely, Mr. Chair, probably in the consolidation of these two House Bills, we can incorporate the suggestions of our resource persons. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bongalon. Any other comments from the members? Honorable Plato.
Mr. Chair, the pandemic caused by COVID-19 really taught us a great lesson, and I fully support the move to amend the Quarantine Act of 2004. May mga dalawang otanong, Mr. Chair, sa Department of Health. Do we have a present data to the number of COVID-19 patients for the year 2024? If yes, may the committee be updated, please. At pangalawa, may I know if COVID-19 test is still one of the immediate tests given to patients with symptoms of the COVID-19 patient like cough and high fever? If the patient tested positive, what is the present protocol now? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Plato, from the Department of Health. Anyone from the Department of Health?
May I know, Mr. Chair, if the DOH is invited for today's?
We have the Bureau of Quarantine, Mr. Chair, but an attached agency of the Department of Health. But I guess they are not the one who can answer the question of Congressman Plato.
The question is the data on the COVID-19 in 2024? Anyone from the Department of Health who knows the, the, you're asking for the incidents, Honorable Plato? Ilan ang?
For 2024?
What about the Department of Health?
For 2024, ilan ang COVID-19?
Who is representing Secretary Ted?
Ah, okay. While waiting for... Let's read for the, the resource person from the Department of Health. I think he... The Department of Health ready? Dr. Salvador?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. Sir, we will coordinate with the Department of Health EB to get the data of the 2024 cases of COVID-19, sir.
2024?
2024, sir. Yes, sir. And we will submit, sir, to the committee, sir.
Today?
Yes, sir. We'll just call the assigned agencies, sir, to get the data, sir.
As to the second question of Honorable Plato, ano daw ang protocol ngayon pagka nagpositive ang COVID-19? Is that the question, Honorable Plato?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
With regard to the protocol of the Bureau of Quarantine, sir. So we cater, sir, 'yung mga incoming natin na passenger, international passenger. So sa ngayon, sir, talagang limited na po 'yung nagpa-positive na mga incoming kaysa galing sa other country. So if, if the Bureau of Quarantine, sir, makakuha kami ng mga symptomatic, so we still test them. Then if found to be positive, sir, we still quarantine, sir, for five days. And then if the patient is asymptomatic, sir, we declare the patient as non-infectious, sir. That is for the international passengers, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Salvador.
Okay, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge Deputy Speaker, yes, sir, Alonto Balindong of the Second District of Laguna, ah, Lanau del Sur. Thank you. Honorable Gólez?
Mr. Chair, if there are no other questions or clarifications or anything coming from our resource persons and at the same time from the members of Congress, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that the three bills, as mentioned, amending the Quarantine Act of 2004 be consolidated and be approved, Mr. Chair. So I so moved, Mr. Chair. Subject to stare.
There is a motion by Honorable Gólez and Julie Seconded.
Second.
By Honorable Cruz that House Bill Number 5665, House Bill Number 8908, and House Bill Number 9114 be consolidated and approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Honorable Gólez?
Mr. Chair, I would also like to make a move that all, all the congressmen present here be made co-authors of the two previous bills as discussed. Thank you. To clarify, the bills on strengthening healthcare manufacturing industries and bills amending the Quarantine Act of 2004.
There is a motion by Honorable Gólez and Julie Seconded that all those present who wishes to be co-authors with the permission of the authors, of course, on the House Bills 1100, 3173, and 9739 be made co-authors. And also on House Bills Number 5665, 8908, and 9114 be made co-authors. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. That ends the deliberation of the bills on Bureau of Quarantine and the strengthening of the local pharmaceutical industry. Thank you very much for resource persons for your attendance. And at this point, you are now excused, the resource person for the bills mentioned are now excused. We now proceed after three minutes with the approval of the technical working report on the counterfeit medicine and HMOs. Thank you. Two minutes suspension. One minute. The meeting is now resumed. At this point, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Journey Jett Nisai of Partilis Pusong Pinoy. Thank you very much. Because I will be presenting the TWG Report on the Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products Prevention, I will now yield the chair to Senior Vice Chair, Honorable Gólez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May we now proceed with the Deliberation on Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products Prevention Act in substitution of House Bills Number 848, 1415, 3984, 5252, and 6342, introduced by Representatives Michael Romero, Representatives Keith Mike, Attorney Mike Tan, Raymond Luis El Rey Villafuerte, Miguel Luis Villafuerte, Choshi Anthony Horibata, Brian Raymond Yamsuan, Christian Tel Yap, and Siriaco Bigato Jr.
Thank you. The Technical Working Group on the Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products headed by this representation held a meeting on November 22, 2023, attended by representatives from the Department of Health, Food and Drug Administration, Department of Trade and Industry, the Bureau of Customs, Intellectual Property Office, and the Philippine Pharmacist Associations Association Incorporated. The unnumbered substitute bill entitled an act strengthening the regulatory system in the country to prevent counterfeit pharmaceutical products declaring large-scale counterfeiting activities as an offense involving economic sabotage, providing for the prohibitions and penalties for violations thereof, and repealing for the purpose Republic Act Number 8203, otherwise known as the Special Law on Counterfeit Drugs. In substitution of House Bills Number 848, 1415, 3984, 5252, and 6342 has been distributed to all committee members. The salient features of the measure are the following. This measure imposes stiffer penalties on the same prohibited acts as provided for in Republic Act Number 8203, such as the manufacture, importation, distribution, sale, offering for sale, donation, trafficking, brokering, exportation, or possession of counterfeit pharmaceutical products; b) possession of any counterfeit pharmaceutical products for personal use; c) photocopying, duplicating, altering, printing, transferring, obliterating, or removing the approved label or any part thereof lawfully belonging to another person for the purpose of using such label or a part thereof on any counterfeit pharmaceutical products or counterfeiting activity; and d) making, selling, or concealing any punch, die, plate, or any other equipment or instrument designed to print, imprint, or reproduce the trademark, trade name, or other identifying mark of another registered producer or any likeness thereof upon any pharmaceutical product or device or its container or label without authority from the legitimate owners of the trademark or trade name. The substitute bill also repeals Republic Act Number 8203, the existing special law on counterfeit drugs, by defining large-scale counterfeiting activities as "counterfeiting activities wherein the value of the counterfeit labels or pharmaceutical products involved is 1 million pesos or more", whether as a single label or pharmaceutical product or totality of the different pharmaceutical labels or products as determined by the Food and Drug Administration. Moreover, this measure declares these large-scale counterfeiting activities as economic sabotage imposing upon offenders thereof the highest possible penalty, as well as permanent closure of the establishment concerned and the revocation of its license to do business. Since Republic Act Number 8203 has been in effect since 1996, for 28 years already, the bill takes into consideration the effects of inflation, hence increased the fiscal penalties. In view of the all foregoing, the immediate passage of this bill is earnestly sought.
Thank you very much, Congressman Gato. May we hear from the representative of from FDA. Attorney Poli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the honorable members of this committee. In behalf of our principal, Doctor Samuel Sakate, and my team here, we respectfully express our sincerest thanks to the honorable authors of this bill, this honorable committee, and the House of Representatives as a whole in their earnest effort to seek to revise RA 8203. The FDA likewise respectfully manifests its full support to the introduction of these bills and prays for the immediate passage of this very important piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, from the representative of FDA, Attorney Poli. Before we proceed, may we recognize Representative Mark Go from the Lone District of Baguio City. Thank you for coming, sir. May we now give this time to Attorney Gumapak from the Department of Trade and Industry for your comments, sir. Can we maybe now give the representative from BIR this time, Attorney Edgar Reyes?
Sure, I think that in the latest version of the draft, in the latest version of the bill, the tax provision has already been deleted, so hence there is no tax-related provision for this particular bill.
Thank you for that clarification. May we now call the representative from Intellectual Property Office of the Philippines, Attorney Reggie Ann Pamatian.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Attorney Ann Edilion of the Intellectual Property Office. We would like to greet the chair and members of this honorable committee, and we would like to express our full support for this bill, and we do sincerely hope that it will be a successful endeavor. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other resource persons that we did not acknowledge? If there are none, from the other representatives, if there are no comments or reactions, may we hear a motion from any of the members?
Mr. Chair, hearing no wala na tayong mga comments sa mga ibang resource person. May we move that we, for the approval of this substitute bill, this Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products Prevention Act. To move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Thank you very much. There is a motion to approve, Julie Seconded, to the Counterfeit Pharmaceutical Products Prevention Act. We hereby approve this. It's so hereby approved. At this juncture, may I transfer the floor to our chairperson? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Honorable Gólez. We now proceed with the approval of the Technical Working Group Report, the substitute bill in substitution of House Bills Number 5336, 5568, and 8787. We now recognize Honorable Gólez, the chairperson of the Technical Working Group on the Health Maintenance Organization Bill, to present its report.
Thank you, sir, and good morning, esteemed members of the committee and distinguished guests. Today, I stand before you as a chairperson of the Technical Working Group on the Health Maintenance Organizations, HMO Act, to present the numbered substitute bill crafted through meticulous collaboration and dedication. On November 13, 2023, the Technical Working Group diligently consolidated House Bills Number 5336, 5568, and 8787 to formulate this comprehensive legislation titled "An Act Ensuring Health Access and Enhancing Health Financing Security Through Health Maintenance Organizations". Allow me to highlight the key provisions of the bill. Firstly, it establishes the Center of Managed Care Services under the Department of Finance to oversee and regulate HMO operations in the country. Recognizing HMO's pivotal role in advancing health care, universal health care, this bill seeks to streamline their coordination with Philhealth to reduce out-of-pocket health expenses significantly. Furthermore, the legislation prioritizes the rights of HMO's health care providers and members while fostering a culture of health consciousness among Filipinos through increased access to affordable health insurance policies. By fostering the growth of HMOs in the nation and offering governmental support and incentives, we aim to ensure their longevity and efficacy in delivering health care services to all Filipinos. Through the establishment of regulatory framework via the Center for Managed Care Services, we commit to upholding standards and safeguarding the interests of providers and beneficiaries. The unnumbered substitute bill also addresses gaps in the current regulatory landscape governing HMOs by promoting transparency, fair competition, and accountability mechanisms. By nurturing a conducive environment for HMOs to flourish, we can enhance the quality and accessibility of health care services across the Philippines. Through this legislative initiative, we are forging a more inclusive and integrated approach to health financing and service provision, critical for achieving the highest attainable health standards for all Filipinos. By fostering strategic partnerships between public and private health systems through HMOs, we can optimize resources and broaden coverage to reach marginalized communities. In closing, the unnumbered substitute bill of the HMO Act reflects our unwavering dedication to advancing universal health coverage and ensuring equitable access to quality health care for every Filipino. By fortifying the regulatory framework for HMOs and instituting Center for Managed Care Services, we're taking significant strides towards realizing our collective vision of a healthier nation. I implore all esteemed committee members to support the enactment of this crucial legislation, which holds a potential to revolutionize the health care landscape in our country. Together, let us forge ahead towards a more inclusive and sustainable health care system that leaves no one behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Gólez. May we now recognize Doctor Santiago Abarisha from Philhealth.
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, we fully support the passage of this important House bill. However, we will submit a position paper on some of the minor provisions, specifically the mandatory HMO coverage for the state and university and colleges, whether some of this provision is in conflict with our clarificatory advisory that we'll be issuing within the next few days. So we will provide a position paper on this matter, including some of the provisions, whether the administrative powers provided to the Department of Finance will cover also the mandate of Philhealth Plus. So we will be issuing the implementing guidelines later on, within the next several months. So it is a query on our part whether Philhealth Plus will be subjected to the same administrative powers inherent in this provision on this very important bill. Mr. Chair, thank you po.
Thank you, Doctor Abarisha. From the Bureau of Internal Revenue, Attorney Edgar Reyes.
Mr. Chair, I think the referral to committee failed to reach us in time. However, since I am here, I would just to provide a comment. I think there was a a RMC declaring the health premiums to be taxable, however, that such the said provision on taxability of the health premiums was however rendered ineffective by a succeeding RMC that says that it will be further be looked into our consideration, hence as it now stands, the health premiums are currently not included in the gross income and hence not taxable. However, so we can look further into the provisions as to its wordings and to its implication and into taxability, we will submit a official position paper on the matter.
So are you in agreement with the substitute bill or you have some reservations?
Sir, sir, as it now stands, per per current BIR rulings, it is that the health premiums are not includeable in the gross income and hence not subject to income tax. However, pending a deeper analysis into the provisions, that will be as it how, that is the treatment as of now, pending any considerations on the matter, because it was only referred to our attention as of now, because the referral to committee failed to reach us on time.
When can you submit your position paper?
We shall include it with the previous first three on the ano. We will have it as a consolidated position paper, including this including this provision on the health maintenance contract, particularly the tax exemption provision.
Is two weeks reasonable?
That would be reasonable. We will note it, but it's still up to our principals. But we will, we always note it that every comment, every request of the Congress is always labeled as flash.
Thank you, Attorney Reyes.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to have some clarificatory questions. I would like to know now, who are responsible, who is responsible for all the HMOs in the country right now? Is it the Department of Health? Is it the Department of Health? And which uh office in the Department of Health if there are one responsible for the HMOs?
Mr. Chair, I may answer that.
Honorable Gólez.
Because um uh, sir, during the deliberation, um, that question was asked by everybody also uh during the TWG meeting, and I vividly remember that the explanation of uh the history of this is, goes like this. Um, during martial law, there was a presidential decree that actually um puts the, the regulations of HMO with, under the Department of Health. And then um for that, for the longest time, it has been under the Department of Health. Sometime in two thousand sixteen, just before that administration was about to leave, there was an executive order transferring the regulation, the regulatory office of uh the HMO from the Department of Health to the Department of Finance under the Insurance Commission. So, in that deliberation, um uh, a lot of uh position papers were, were put forth. Um, and then a question whether or not a, a presidential decree be amended or be repealed by an executive order came about. So, um, from, from that, uh, a lot of questions sprang up, uh sprang up. And then um other substitute bills ensued, which yung nababasa niyo na po ngayon. So, going back to your question, who is the regulatory authority of the HMOs? It is the Insurance Commission, which is under the Department of Finance, sir.
Okay, uh, so they have to register before the uh Insurance Commissioner or the Insurance uh Commission before they can operate. What about in terms of uh the actual operation of the HMOs? Because we know that they provide a lot of health services in terms of reimbursement of claims and all of this. Uh, the Department of Health does not uh participate right now.
Um, the Department of Health does not participate right now, sir. Um, although we have been mentioning during the uh presentations and deliberations, although the, the product is about health services or giving managed health services, at the end of the day, it talks about numbers also. And um, there were uh thoughts of um saying that uh uh it really is um uh the HMOs, when it was transferred to the Insurance Commission, kumbaga nasa limbo sila, nobody is taking care of the HMOs. And from the number of HMOs before the transfer to the IC, up to the present, I think uh half of the HMOs have died already. Because many of other insurance companies became an HMO without the right accreditation. So, maraming kinain. And so, that's the reason why we were trying to push for this uh uh substitute bill uh to be passed immediately, so as to uh save that industry, sir.
That uh the Center for Managed Care Services or the CMCS will be the one responsible now uh over this uh HMOs in the country?
That is very accurate, sir, and that is the reason, that is the soul of the substitute bill, sir.
You stated in your bill that this will be attached to the Department of Finance.
Yes, sir. Considering that uh uh when you walk in the corridors of the Department of Health, you see, you, you seldom see people who can count and give you all these uh statistical data and analysis compared when you walk in the halls of the Department of Finance. So, they will be better, they will be better be guided if they are under the Department of Finance, sir.
May I know if we have uh from the Department of Finance here, and if they agree that there will be an attached agency of the Department of Finance, the CMCS? Meron ba tayo? Did you?
Sir, I consulted the, the now secretary uh uh informally uh before this uh, the meetings, maybe a month ago or two months ago about this uh idea, and he really welcomes this.
Well, that's good then, if uh it will be under the Department of Finance. Will you be giving uh the board, uh, is another question related to this quasi-judicial function uh in this particular measure, uh the CMCS, particularly the office of the administrator? You have clothing with a lot of powers here, and one of them is, ito nga, itong uh uh administrator, uh are you giving him also quasi-judicial function uh, you know, in the exercise of the powers and functions of the CMCS, uh, Mr. Chair?
I think uh, Mr. Chair, it will be, it will also be spread, the powers will also be spread. Um. Yes, may, may, meron quasi-judicial powers, yes. Yes, sir.
Well, uh, I think that might be a big uh ano, uh concern. If you give them uh quasi-judicial function, uh probably we need to limit the, the exercise of that function as far as the administrator is concerned, because he can unilaterally exercise that even, probably without even the consent of the board. If I look at the provisions of uh section, section fourteen.
Sir, maybe um, may, we can propose um that this provision uh uh may, may be subjected to the approval of the Department of Finance Secretary, sir.
Say you can also cite uh in, as an individual, uh because it's vested in section fourteen, the powers of the administrator to cite for contempt, both direct and indirect, in accordance with the pertinent provisions of and penalties prescribed by the rules of court. Issue cease and desist orders to prevent fraud or injury to the public. You are clothing him with a lot of powers here uh uh independent even of the board of the uh yeah, the, the CMCS or the Center for Managed Care Services under the, under section ten and section fourteen. Pwede na't is gurong.
Uh, sir, uh would you want to amend the, the certain provision so that it can be incorporated?
Yeah, I think we can, we can amend this, probably, but I'm not prepared to give you the detailed, the specific amendments. Probably, we can approve this subject to the submission of the amendments that we will recommend.
Yes, sir. Subject to style and the amendment, sir.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just want to be sure that uh eto pa, compel the officers of any registered HMOs to call meetings and stakeholders or members their own under the supervision, suspend or revoke. Eto pwede niyang gawing magisa eh.
Sir, maybe we also add that there are other um uh certain provisions, speci- specifically on section sixteen, um B, C, D, E, F, I, M, and N. Um, be so, be subject for um the approval of the Department of Finance Secretary. And of course, um with, if you, if you so wish to, to make an amendment also, sir, um, we will welcome that, sir.
Yeah, okay. I, I, I will do that, uh, Mr. Chair. Tsaka yung section fifteen, say you are giving him exclusive powers of the administrator, fines not less than five hun- five thousand and not more than two hundred thousand. Suspension of, suspension or after due hearing, removal of directors and or officers or agents.
Okay, sir. We will wait for your amendment, sir.
So, Mr. Chair, I, that's uh just my, you know, uh comments on this particular, but I think it's really important that we have a strong body that should regulate the operation uh to protect not only the HMOs, but the, the clients, the people who will be subscribing, uh, you know, like us. We have HMO coverages, and we want to be sure that just in case there is a problem, there is a body that can help us in addressing problems with HMOs.
Mr. Chair, um, you know, we all agree to the wisdom of uh Congressman Gó. Uh, this really the, the soul of the substitute bill is actually to make a solid and strong body that will regulate the HMO, because clearly we see that the health maintenance organizations, um, they're the brother of the universal health care. Uh, without these um third parties, um, the universal health care law, we'll, we will have a hard time implementing it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, isa pa no, uh, there was a statement kanina that uh you're gonna mandate uh uh organizations or individuals to be covered by HMOs. Kanina, I just heard that, uh, is that uh going to be part of it? When you mandated, sino ba yung imamandate natin dito?
Ah, yung mga universities? You're referring to the universities, uh, no, um. Yes, your, I think there was a comment from Dr. Abaricia on the coverage of uh insurance on universities and colleges, schools?
Yes, Abaricia. Dr. Abaricia.
Um, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, our comments specifically is not on the uh issue of uh provision of mandatory uh HMO coverage. Our, our issue is more of the powers given to the Board of Regents to have the discretionary power to decide on the form, the coverage, and terms of the service, because uh it may run conflict with our clarificatory advisory, which we, we would release in the next few days in the newspaper, providing guidance to various G O C Cs and, and national government agencies on what to procure on top of the basic Philhealth benefit package. So, this might conflict with the intent of the bill, uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, may, may I know what office uh is Dr. Philhealth, uh, Philhealth?
Miss, uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm from Philhealth, and I'm, I'm the head of the Philhealth Plus office.
Yeah, uh, you don't even need to tell the Board of Regents that they have the option. I think they, they, they just have to comply with what is mandated by law as far as coverage of our uh S U Cs in the whole country. Oh, but are you going to release one that you will, ano yung, ano, I would like to know, kung ano yun?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, the, the development of the implementing guidelines for Philhealth Plus is still ongoing. So, so we are trying to come up with various inputs from, from uh various agencies so that we can come up with the, with the uh, the implementing guidelines that we will be rolling out this year po. So, there's no clear assurance as to what is the form and the coverage, but we will focus on what is on top of the basic benefit package that Philhealth is providing. So, that's it, po, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, so I, I'm clarified that you're gonna, you will not put any input in your memorandum that uh you will mandate uh S U Cs to come out with a program that would require the S U Cs to offer HMOs to their employees? Walang ganon?
Mr. Chair, the implementation of the uh Philhealth Plus is uh, is a generic approach po. And also, we do not provide uh an individual guidance to various uh government agencies. It is for the holistic approach to, to the, the uh G O C Cs and national government agencies po.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Gó. Uh, may we now listen to, I mean, we recognize uh from the Department of Health, uh, Mr. Michael Bulatow?
Yes, po, good morning po, Mr. Chair. So, the DOH acknowledges the evolving landscape of HMOs in our country, and we fully support the initiatives to enhance the regulation of HMOs to better serve the needs of the population. Um, in the UHC Act, section twenty-eight specifically states the importance of the collaboration po of the DOH, Philhealth, and HMOs in private health insurance in ensuring um better financial protection po to our um fellow countrymen. So, the DOH po um has its reservation, however, um, and we propose some consideration of the following. In terms of data access po, um, we want to request that the DOH to have access to the aggregate health data from HMOs against in compliance po with existing data privacy laws and related issuance. Um, for us to have a um understanding po of the health data of the subscribers po, of the health, of the health policies um of HMOs for public health tracking and developing policies po on, on benefit complementation. In terms of dispute resolution po, um, the DOH can offer po um recommendatory advice in the Health Medical Review Committee po in, in cases of disputes requiring public health or medical expertise po between the HMOs and the healthcare policy owners po. Um, further po, in terms of benefit complementation, we want to emphasize then po that the um proposed CMCS po to coordinate po with DOH and Philhealth, because we are currently engaging in designing a benefit complementation policy so that the services po of the HMOs can be support, um, can be strategically aligned with the health system deficits and improve financial coverage um of Philhealth. And then, with regards po, sa mandatory coverage of S U C personnel, we want to request that this section be revisited, because we have existing initiatives po with the DBM aim at providing health maintenance organization coverage to all government employees po. Um, I believe they, they are currently studying and developing po an EO um to provide guidance to all of the national government agencies po. So, um, with this, we recommend um thorough deliberation and harmonization po um for this particular section po. So, um, also po, because of, because mandatory coverage then po will entail um funding, so we want to ensure that there are specifics, um, funding mechanisms po that will allow to ensure that all government employees po sana will be provided um HMO coverage to better support Philhealth's financial protection to all Filipinos. And then also, um, with this, in light of the new substitute bill, um, further details of the considerations will be submitted once signed by our secretary po. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bulatow. Yes, Honorable Gó.
The provision on section twenty-nine, nakalagay dito mandatory HMO coverage. All S U Cs shall provide mandatory HMO coverage to all full-time faculty and regular and non-teaching personnel of the state universities and colleges. I think we need to review this provision as to whether we want to have it included, that we make it mandatory, because this will set the, the floodgate for uh, or uh, you know, a precedent for other organizations, just like what was mentioned, and that will require a big funding. And it might be interpreted as supporting this uh HMOs. Parang ano, if we make it mandatory, uh, Mr. Chair, man.
Mr. Chair, Honorable Gólez.
Mr. Chair, um, uh, we, we see the wisdom of uh Congressman Mark Gó. Uh, may we strike out the mandatory and instead uh, uh, change it according to his style or his amendment uh on this uh section, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you. Are there any other resource persons that have not been called out? Okay, before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Steve Chongbian of the uh LON District of Sarangani. Thank you.
Any comment? Mr. Chair, hearing the other comments uh of our colleagues and our uh service person, may I move for the approval of this substitute bill, subject to amendments, style, and refinement, Mr. Chair?
Second. So, there's a motion by Honorable Plato and Julie seconded by uh Honorable Cruz that the uh substitute bill uh in substitution of House Bills number five three three six. in substitution of House Bills Number five, three, three, six, five, five, six, eight, and eight, seven, eight, seven, be approved? Hearing no objection, uh, be approved subject to style and amendment, um, as also, uh, manifested by Honorable Mark Go. Uh, hearing no objection, the, uh, substitute bill is now approved.
Mr. Chair, I will submit, uh, the amendments that I just mentioned earlier.
Yes, Honorable Go. Thank you very much for your inputs.
Thank you.
Any motion for co-authorship?
Yeah, well, uh, uh, I would like to move that all members present be, uh, considered as co-authors of, uh, House Bill or the substitute, unnumbered substitute bill in substitution to, uh, House Bills five, three, three, six, five, six, six, eight, and eight, seven, eight, seven, uh, Mr. Chair.
So, there's a motion by Honorable Mark Go and Julie Seconded that all those present who wishes to be co-authors, uh, be made co-authors of substitute bill, uh, unnumbered substitute bill in substitution of House Bills Number five, three, three, six, five, five, six, eight, and eight, seven, eight, seven. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Uh, we'd like also to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Franz Castro, Deputy Minority Leader of Partilista Act Teachers. Thank you. Uh, other matters?
I move that we adjourn, uh, this, uh.
I second this, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, there's a motion to, Julie Seconded motion to adjourn. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Thank you very much, um, distinguished resource person and esteemed colleagues. Good morning.